Go ahead and begin tonight's meeting. May I have your call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, if they will please stand for invocation by Pastor Lois Black from the First United Methodist Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by, where did she go? Oh, led by Crystal Martin, if you don't mind.
Pledge?
Nope. Yeah, yes, when we're done here.
Would you join me? Yuba City, we pray for each of our city leaders and thank you for each one of them. I pray for supernatural strength for them. Raise them up like Joshua so they can be leaders of great courage. Help them not to fear the decisions they make because you, Lord, are with them. Make them strong and of good courage. Inspire them to do according to all you have commanded them. Grant them wisdom and help them remember that it is you who gives wisdom because from your mouth comes knowledge and understanding. I pray that they will not grow weary of doing good, but in due season they will reap all of the godly things they strive for on our behalf. Lord, grant their desires for the city that you have made them the rulers over. I pray that you will help them not to give up. And finally, Lord, I pray that every city leader will obey your voice and that your richest blessing will come upon them and overtake them in Jesus' name. And I declare that you have blessed every leader in Yuba City, and this is the prayer of my heart. Amen.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, thank you Pastor Black and Crystal. Appreciate that. Before today's meeting, we had a closed session. When we went into closed session, there was no comment period because there did not happen to be a member of the public here at that time. Also, for the record, Councilmember Shaw did arrive at 5:13 PM. So we'll move on now to presentations and proclamations. First one's a Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. If I could have the President of the Sikh Temple, Jaswant Bains, come forward, and the Secretary, Sarb Tiara, please come forward for the reason. All right, Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 19th. I'd like to welcome Sarb Jit Thiero and Jaswant Bains from the Terrebonne Sikh Temple to accept the proclamation on behalf of Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Sikhism is the fifth, am I saying that right, Sikh or Sikh? Sikh, excuse, thank you. Sikhism is the fifth largest religion in the world, and today there are more than 23,006 worldwide and an estimated 250,000 Americans of Sikh origin. Nearly 40% of the nation's estimated Sikh population reside in California, and they play a crucial role in the economic prosperity of our city, that's for sure. Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering greater respect among all people through faith and service. The city of Yuba City is committed to respecting the heritage and culture of our diverse community, that's for sure. So now, therefore, be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim the month of November 2019 to be a Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. Thank you both very much. Would you like here to say anything?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's greatly appreciated. This is a distinct honor and privilege to be here. We appreciate the recognition. One other thing I would like to say is that this is very special year for us. This year is our founder Guru Nanak Devi's 550th anniversary, and this is also 50th anniversary of our Sikh temple and the 40th Sikh parade. So we would like to invite all of you, and we will particularly invite the mayor, vice mayor, and the other council members to come over there. And the program starts on November 1, and it concludes on November 3 with a parade. And the seminar will be on Saturday, on the 2nd, and we will recognize some of the local dignitaries. And we will also have a seminar in English after that explaining the life of Guru Nanak Devi and Sikhism and our holy scriptures. So thank you very much. We're part of the community. We're very proud to be here, and we're peace-loving people, and you guys welcomed us with open arms over the years. And, you know, some of us, my family has been here. My grandfather came to this area in 1924. So thank you very much for taking us and accepting us. Thank you.
There she is.
Very important, but nevertheless unfortunate.
This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2019. So we'd like to welcome our good friend Marcia Kraus-Taylor here. She's the Executive Director from Casa de Esperanza to accept the proclamation on behalf of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and abuse. It leaves an imprint of fear and hostility for the abused in our community. The problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people but cross all society as a whole. Adults and children are also victims of violence each year. In our quest to impose sanctions on those who break the law by penetrating, perpetrating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic violence and their children who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. Very big deal. So thank you for everything that you do, absolutely. So now, therefore, be resolved, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together in our community through prevention, intervention, and education programs to eliminate domestic violence and become a violence-free community. Thank you very much.
Of course I want to say something. Need you ask. I want to thank you very much for coming out tonight, but mainly my thank you is to the city council. We've been a partner for 40-plus years. Y'all have been there for us over and over again. Each October we come, we ask for you to help proclaim this as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and your predecessors, as well as you, have always been there for us. You've honored us with other things like pickleball. So we're just very, very grateful to be in a community like Yuba City, and we are very, very thankful for the leadership of the council. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your leadership too, Marcia. We appreciate it. Vera, I saw her out there somewhere. There she is.
You can bring up whoever you would like. Or whoever would like to come up. It's all good.
Executive Board, David, Fred, come on up. Executive Board.
How are you?
How are you, son?
Doing great. Good to see you. Excuse me one second.
She'll never get us all in the picture.
All right.
All right, this is in recognition for the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement via Carrera here and friends, many friends, welcome to all of you. This month, we honor the rich heritage of the Hispanic community and celebrate its countless achievements. The Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, AHA, or what we finally refer to as AHA, was established in 1992 by 15 local Hispanic Latino business leaders and concerned community members. Their mission is to be leaders in improving the quality of life for people of Hispanic heritage in our local communities. They have accomplished their mission through community action, education enhancement, and economic development. The following are a summary of collective memorable accomplishments in the past 27 years. We have, it looks like, three of them here. Awarded over $175,000 of scholarships to high school students in southern Yuba counties. They've adopted and donated food baskets to more than 500 families every holiday season, and partnered with the U.S. Department of Forestry, launched Proyecto Navidad, in which we introduce Hispanic Latino children through day field trips to the foothills. And the United States Department of Forestry staff teaches the importance of reforestation and land preservation. That's very good. Many more things, without a doubt. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby proclaim the month of October 29, 19 to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely.
All right. I love all these people talking.
First of all, I want to thank the city council for giving us this great privilege and being honored tonight, and also for my executive board for being here tonight and being supportive, and the people. We are very lucky to be part of the Hispanic Heritage Month this month, and I want to acknowledge that we all do our part in this world, every ethnic, and it really is very exciting to be, continue to work with the city, both in Sutter County and Yuba County, because we are two counties, but we're one. So thank you again. Thank you, city council.
All right, one picture here, real quick. All right, thank you all very much, and congratulations. All right, we have a, well, we got a couple more seconds here. Item number four, Camping Ordinance Amendment. Sounds exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was introduced at the last meeting. There are no changes. I'm available for questions.
I don't have any. Does any member of the public care to comment? Go ahead.
Just getting ready.
Oh, go ahead.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce staff's recommendation of the camping ordinance amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Number five, Garden Refuge Ordinance Amendment. And Ben is out there. Let's skip that, go to number six, Rules and Regulations Governing City Council Meetings, presented by Terrell. You guys remind me to go back to number five, please, when we're done.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yep.
Before you this evening are some proposed changes to Title II, Chapter I of the municipal code. And these major changes are proposed to be removed are sections, two sections that were adopted in 1991 and do not provide much flexibility for council to manage their meetings. And we're recommending that Section 2 dash, whoops, I did a presentation. 2-1.02 Order of Business, Section 2-1.04 Rules of Conduct, and some other minor language changes. So having this information or these rules as part of the municipal code is something, it's a, the municipal code are the laws of the city, and so that means that we need to abide by them. As these were adopted in 1991, were proposed that it's totally removed, and so council can adopt these different rules as they want to through resolution at future meetings to order their rules of business. So the rules of conduct is the same type of business. So right now, there's scripted rules that the council makes for making motions and voting, and realistically, we're not really following that anyways. We do more of a Rosenberg's rules. So this, taking this out of the ordinance municipal code will also allow council to adopt a resolution at a future meeting to do what, to adopt Rosenberg's rules or some other method that they want to do. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the ordinance amending the Yuba City Municipal Code, Sections 2-1 through 2-06 of the Chapter I pertaining to the rules and regulations of the governing of the city council meetings on way of the first reading.
Any questions? Any comment from the public by chance? Nothing? All right.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we introduce an ordinance amending the Yuba City Municipal Code, Section 2-1.01 through 2-1.06 of Chapter I pertaining to the rules and regulations governing city council meetings, on way of first reading.
Second.
First and a second?
Tied second.
What?
Tied second.
Tied for second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Back to number five, Garden Refuge Ordinance Amendment, presented by Ben Moody. Welcome back, Ben.
All right, so the item I have for you is, one, it's the, it's the reintroduction of the update to the Garden Refuge Ordinance. So basically, what I'm, coming back to you from last meeting, instead of actually considering it for adoption tonight, we're reintroducing it with, with a little bit of language. When we looked into it, a little bit, it's probably over the top, but I really wanted to be specific about the bag. Before, when we coordinated with recology, we talked about taking the cardboard box out, and when we looked at that contract language with recology, there was a specific requirement about overages that they can be in the bag. So when the public residents decide to bag those leaves, there's no confusion in that ordinance that it basically, it's allowed in bags up to 50 pounds, you set it next to the, to the bin. And so with that, tonight, we're basically updating it to reintroduce, to put that specific sentence in about the bags being allowed, and I wanted to come back with you with a little bit more information, just with, with our outreach, that we're, we're working towards putting a mailer out in the water bill, social media, and we're working to have the street sweeper wrapped with a campaign. This is what we're working on right now, that would probably be a third of a sheet mailer that would go into the water bill that has basically our campaign about, don't blow it, Bennett, bag it. We'll have a little bit of information on the back about, put it in the waste or bag it. Got a little bit of the red marks about the potential violations. You know, we're not trying to harp on that, but we're trying to show it and be proactive with letting the, letting the public know. This is a quick slide. I know it's a little bit small, but this is what the sweeper, so our sweeper's being wrapped with this, and so as it drives around town, we'll have one side with the, with the, don't blow it, Bennett, bag it, and then we'll have this on the other side about the stormwater prevention, and then we'll have a HR ad on the back. So you'll see that within the next few weeks, hopefully cruising around town with some decals on it. And so with that, I'd like to reintroduce the ordinance with the updates, and I'd be happy, waive the first reading, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Any comment from the public?
Actually, through the mayor, I do have one. Going back to what you said about the outreach, how soon is all of this going to take effect? Because fall is here, winter's coming, the leaves are going to start falling. Going back to what my fellow council member said, I really want to see us get ahead of this and be aggressive in our outreach to the, to our residents and the public to know. And is there anything we thought about asking recology as well to do something on their end to help partner this? Because last thing we want to see is piles of leaves in the street and people getting, you know, violations and nasty grams, and how soon and aggressive can we hit this campaign is really what I'm asking.
So this update, with, with any changes to the ordinance, won't become effective until 30 days after the adoption. So it will come back to you on November 5, and then best-case scenario, if it, should the council approve it, then it would come into effect 30 days later, so you're looking around December 5. By that time, a lot of the leaves have been fallen, and so you won't see any sort of code enforcement action partaking before that. But we will work to implement some of that social media, that pushes for, hey, Bennett, bag it, with the sweeper's going to be wrapped beforehand, doing its, doing its laps around the city, and, you know, it's a little bit, I don't, with the mailer, the timing's a little bit, basically, I have to send it out at the end of the week in order to meet the November deadline, but at the same time, I don't want to pre-post anything that doesn't have council approval and through. So we're working on maybe modifying it slightly so it doesn't have the exact effective date, so then that way we could give out the advance notice, so we could hit that November timeline versus waiting and sending it out with the December bill where it comes out later on. So we're weighing those options to figure out how to get it out in the mail correctly, but also could use social media for, for a quick response.
Just, just my thoughts on this, whether or not we pass an ordinance and amend this and clean it up or not, it's just good for our city to pick the trash up off the streets and dispose of it the way it should. So I would like to see us even just start with the, the awareness campaign without an effective date. People should be putting it in the green totes, put it in bags or something today. So I'd like to see us just kind of get ahead of this before the ordinance actually gets, gets here. There's nothing saying we can't have a, a marketing campaign to ask people to do the right thing without the ordinance. Please correct me if I differ from the council up here, but I think we just need to get ahead of it and not wait till December.
We'll work on that.
Elaine, do you have something to say? Come on down.
Elaine Miles, and I live on Jamie Drive. I don't have a single solitary tree in my yard, but a whole lot of things blow from other people's yards. How are you going to hold the people who are really responsible for this? And the drains down the street from me, I see them blocked by lots of leaves, and they're about a half a block from me. Don't blow it, bag it. I think that stuff needs to go out right away, but how are we really going to enforce this? They should have been in bags, not pushed out to the street. So I agree with that. But get it out to the people, but what do you do when it all blows into your yard and you're held responsible? I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anybody else? Come on down. Welcome.
Name's Dale MacDale. I live on Sharon Drive. Would probably go in, hadn't been mentioned about it, but I, I'm surprised that it's gone this long, some of these blowers that blow things out in the street. It's ridiculous, and that brings up the issue about a blower. These should be vacuumed up and not blown. I have, well, I have three, I live on the, on the intersection, and there's three houses around me that blow. And I mean, these people come in and they blow with a blower for an hour. I was out one day watching, and they, they have no respect for people walking by, neighbors or anything else. Was out one day and they was blowing, there's always a breeze going north or south or east or west, somewhere breeze blowing. They blowing dirt, and they keep blowing, and they whip it up in the air, and it was blowing over to the next block. And I told them, I said, you're blowing dirt over there. He said, no, that's God who doing that. But they take these blowers and they just blow. We had the fire, unfortunate fire for Paradise. We got a lot of smoke down here, and it eventually calmed down, everything settled down. They were, the next week, they were by with the blowers, and they blow it off the street, they had it going up, and it fogged again. And so there should be some control put on the people with the blowers. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Hello, Liz Cervantes, 862 Country Lane in Yuba City. I live in the county but have rental properties in the city and would love to know if landlords are going to be held responsible for this type of thing. Thank you, Mayor. You guys are tearing it up. I love it.
Thank you, Liz. We have a quick input on that question there, Ben, by chance.
So, so respond to Elaine and Dale. This ordinance update would address those concerns that basically, instead of having those conflicts, would specifically say it needs to be binned or put in the recycling bin. Regarding the nuisance, so this would be added to our current nuisance, and Shannon, I'm looking to you a little bit, but my understanding from the code is it goes to the property owner, but that wouldn't keep us from YC 311 when it comes in. Typically, how it comes in is some sort of complaint. Code enforcement responds to it, and if it is a rental property, it's usually a knock on the door or some sort of mailer that goes out to them with a warning. In those rental property situations, we usually address both the, both the site address and the, and the owner of that.
And Ben, if I could jump in really quickly. It applies to the person owning, leasing, or subleasing or occupying the property. So it gives the city the maximum flexibility and order for enforcement. As a practical matter, a lot of people who are leasing property have clauses in their agreement that require them to comply with state, local, and federal law, so there is an option for landlords to help enforce that as well.
Through the mayor, this has struck me after listening to, to the public speak, is outreach to the landscape contractors, who are the ones that, in addition to the public, are going to be, do we have any means or methods of targeting them with the information?
So we did. And so before we brought this, late September, we pulled all of the licensed, business license contractors in the city, I think it was around, in the 70s, that we did a correspondence. We sent out a, a letter to them and basically asked for this input, so here's their draft ordinance that we're thinking about doing. And out of that 73, I think we received one from a larger contractor, landscape contractor, who basically told us verbally that they were okay with it, they just thought that they wanted to treat the small guys fairly as the large guys, was the input back, that, hey, we're happy to comply, but we want the city to make everybody comply fairly.
All right, anybody else care to comment? All right. Have a motion?
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make staff's recommendation of the Garden Refuge Ordinance Amendment. Through staff's recommendation.
All right. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called, and public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. I have one written request, it was handed to me today by Rigo Diaz. Come on down. Come on down. If anybody else would care to speak that has not submitted a card, please feel free to queue up behind Rigo.
My name is Rigo Diaz. I live at 718 Tabor Avenue here in Yuba City. I'm here to introduce myself as the newly appointed operations manager for Recology Yuba Sutter. I do have ties to the community. I was born at Fremont Hospital back in 1983. So I went to Chico State, went away for a little bit and now it's great to be back home, not only to work for Recology, but to live in the community that I get to service. So looking forward to working with everyone and thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Rigo. Big welcome to you. Thank you very much. And seeing nobody else step up, we will move on to the consent calendar, which consists well, I'll just read it. All matters listed under a consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, city or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. We have one item, which is just the minutes from last, or last two meetings.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Move to approve consent calendar?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Number 10, exchange agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints for properties located on Civic Center Boulevard. Welcome, Diana.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to bring before you tonight an exchange agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. So the property under consideration tonight is the southwest corner of Butte House Road and Civic Center Boulevard. So this is the property that would be transferred to the church. And the church approached us in June of this year, inquiring as to whether or not the city would be interested in selling this property to the church. As we were going through discussions, they did an ALTA survey of the property that basically comprises the church. And what we found is that they still own a triangular sliver right here, located on the east edge of Civic Center Field and the west side of Civic Center Boulevard. So fortunately through this process, we can now include in this agreement, if council elects to move forward, to transfer this piece to the city so that we own that entire portion of Civic Center Field. I know that there's been a lot of confusion in the community in terms of a lot of rumors that the church is actually buying Civic Center Field. That's not correct. The city is retaining ownership of Civic Center Field, but the church would be able to utilize this piece to incorporate it into their larger project. So with that, the church hired CBRE of Sacramento to prepare an appraisal of that southwest corner of Butte House Civic Center. The size is approximately one half acre. It was valued at $3.75 per square foot for a total value of approximately $80,000. If we apply the appraised value to that small sliver portion to be transferred to the city, it's approximately 1,562 square feet for a value of $5,857.50. There are terms in the exchange agreement that the church agrees to recordation of a construction covenant. So with that, it states that the church will commence material construction of the new temple within five years. So you know, one thing that's exciting, there's been an exciting announcement within the community that the church is going to build their temple at this site. And so it's important to put in there that a term of this agreement is that they'll commence construction within five years or they have to offer it back to the city at the same price that the city is selling it to them. The closing date is no later than January 30th, 2020. And then also the church agrees to conservation easement stating that the church shall preserve, trim and maintain the trees and landscaping in good condition. Right now there are some redwood trees and other trees on that triangular piece of property. And so they would be required to maintain those trees, promptly remove any diseased or dead trees in their landscaping, replace the same, keep the property free from any trash and not use or allow the property to be occupied or used by people. So with that, the fiscal impact is a net $74,142.50 less closing costs to the city. The recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute an exchange agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints for the properties located on Civic Center Boulevard. And I would like to note that there are a couple of representatives from the church here tonight, right here. And, and then just really quickly, here's the rendering of the proposed temple. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions? Anybody from the public care to say anything? Nope? All right, we can go forward with the motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an exchange agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints for the property located on Civic Boulevard, APN 59-12001 and a triangular portion of APN 59-010-119.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very well. Unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. One step closer. All right. I asked them if they wanted to talk. All right. Ben, Blackburn Tally Field Lighting Phase Two Project Award.
All right. So the item before you, yeah, good evening again, Mayor and members of the council. So the item before you is in regards to Phase Two of the Blackburn Tally Lighting Improvements. And so a little history on it, a few years back, we had some safety concerns. One of the, the large lights fell over. We had about a 60-foot plus light that fell over. And then also, looking at those lights, they were from the eighties, we were starting to have a lot of maintenance issues with them. It takes special equipment to get up and replace those lights. And then also some lighting standards that are recognized by the different Little League, ASA softball and different things. And so when we looked at the project, it's expensive. And so when we looked at it, we thought the best approach would go into like a multi-phase implementation through the CIP. And so we broke it into a three-phased approach where the last phase was, first phase was completed a couple of years ago. And with that, we went with an LED lighting system, Musco Lights, which is pretty much the, the standard for, for lighting, for field complex lighting that, that provides that 50-foot candle in field, 30-foot candle consistently. And it has a, the 25-year warranty, which is really huge when comparing the others where it's, it's maintenance, material, labor, and they monitor it and take care of it for that 25-year period. And so, so right now we're looking at moving forward with a Phase Two project implement, that CIP project. And so the, the scope with Phase Two would to, would to add four new poles, these, for the, for Field Two of the Blackburn Tally complex, where we're going to utilize two shared poles. So when we did Phase One, we, we made these poles larger and we actually implemented the lights on four Field Two on those poles when we did that installation to try to be more efficient. And then with this project, we're going to have, we're going to take out the eight and the sum is going to be four with two shared ones. And so that's the scope of the project. Here's a couple pictures of, of the new lights going in. The big difference being, instead of being metal bolted to a foundation, these are concrete and they're, they sit on a concrete sleeve above ground and they're wireless controlled now and they, they really, with the Musco lighting system, they have this lighting network, how it dials into the controller to make sure it could really enhance the field uniform compared to current sta, current lights where you go out to one side of the baseline, it's five-foot candles versus the 50 and 30, so you get that consistency. And so with that, there's a price tag with it and, and they're expensive. And so with Phase One, we went through a competitive bid process to, to do those lights and the shared poles. It was around 349,000. With that, there was a little bit more scope because of the shared poles, the larger poles with the lights for Field Two and with the controller. And so now we're looking at Phase Two and 273,000 approximately. And what we're, what we're looking to do with this contract is to utilize our cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell. And so last time, we got a pretty good price with them and we thought, you know, let's, let's do a competitive bid price. And what we found out when we did that competitive bid was that it was really hard for, we didn't get a good price. It was actually slightly higher. And what it is, is that in order to get those lights and have that warranty put in, that the electrician had to be certified installer, they had to be trained a certain way for, for Musco to basically put their lights in. And so what that, what happened was when those, those electricians that wanted to bid on the project, everybody had, they went from being Musco being the prime contractor to Musco being the sub. And then everybody added their contingency factors on there. And so it came in higher than the, the Sourcewell agreement. So staff with Phase Two were recommending that we use that cooperative purchasing agreement. The municipal code allows it with, with sections in the procurement manual under sole sourcing regarding compatible with existing equipment from one vendor and quality requirements that are available and comparable products. And so with that, and then also with Sourcewells, when we looked at their contracts with, with Musco, there's specific language in there about complying with all state laws and then also paying prevailing wages. And so staff recommends that we utilize that in order to avoid higher prices and issues with timing and potential higher price. And so, and then I got a, a section on there that currently the CIP has Phase Three budgeted 175,000, which is lower because we could utilize the existing poles on Phase, on Field Three, but change out the heads. And so on Phase, on Field Three, there are existing higher quality poles, my Musco in place, but we would swap out the lights from the metal halide to, to, when we get to that point. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and see staff's recommendations A and B.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from Diaz? From public, by chance? All right. Motion time. Dave, go ahead.
Through the mayor. I move to adopt a resolution adopting a Sequa Class Class One category exemption, awarding a construction contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of 272,82485 by piggybacking on Sourcewell contract number 082114MSL with the finding this in best interest of the city and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Blackburn Tally Field Lighting Phase Two project. Also, I move that we authorize the finance director to make the supplemental appropriations and related transfers in the amount of 26,46609 from the unallocated general capital improvement funds to CIP account 901-234-65501 for the additional funds necessary to complete construction.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Thank you very much, Ben. Moving on to number 12, which is a suggestion that we as a council endorse the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. For those folks who are not familiar with it, I have a summary here and it just appeared on my desk. I know things just don't do that. So whomever prepared that, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So the, the act is supported by many cities, victim groups and law enforcement and businesses, including the California District Attorneys Association, California Peace Officers Association, and women escaping a violent environment. So it's designed to fix specific issues previously adopted and we've all may have heard of and, and just very unfortunate things that passed, AB 8109, which is known as re-alignment. The purpose of this bill was to reduce the issues of overcrowding that was occurring in state prisons. Well, we all know what happened with that. Prop 47, known as the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, which reclassified certain felonies to misdemeanors. Great. And Prop 57, known as the Public Safety Rehabilitation Act, the purpose of that bill is to enhance the public safety by emphasizing rehabilitation. So you just go with the summary, the, if passed, this initiative that we're, have an opportunity to endorse here will reclassify currently what is, for whatever reason, considered non-violent crimes such as rape of unconscious persons, sex trafficking of a child and, and 14 other serious crimes as violent, which will prevent the early release of inmates convicted of those crimes. It will reform the parole system to stop the early release of violent felons, expand parolee oversight and strengthen penalties for parole violations. Reform theft laws to restore accountability for serial thieves and organized theft gangs and expand DNA collection to include those convicted of drug theft, domestic violence and other serious crimes to help solve rape, murder and other violent crimes and to exonerate those wrongly accused, which is I think very important as well. So it seems like a no-brainer. We have an opportunity to officially endorse that as a council and I move that we do so, unless there's any comment from the public or council. Nothing? Okay. Any comment perhaps?
Through the mayor?
Yes, thank you.
I was reading through the, the initiative and seems like a quite complex initiative as most are. They're not easy to follow all the way through. I think it's a great thing that we do support this ballot measure because it's going to go into the statewide ballot. It's not necessarily, hopefully the voters agree with us. So I would only request that for future agenda items like this, that we have additional initiative information added to, to the agenda items so that we could, you know, have some pros and cons on both ends of this because there's really no other, besides what we have to dig through ourselves. The, the question that is here that makes me related to the sense that collecting of DNA, which I believe is an issue, chief? Is that an issue that we're having in our local area? Collection of DNA and the cost to that?
So with DNA, the, the problem is that they reclassified felonies to misdemeanors. And when you reclassify felony to a misdemeanor, you're no longer able to collect the sample of DNA.
Okay.
With this and increasing certain crimes to a felony, then we're able to capture those DNA swaps from those individuals.
So were there some cold cases or potential new cases? Is that, how does that relate to a new case and a cold case when the DNA, because of the changes of these particular bills that were passed with the re-alignment, the Prop 47 and the Prop 57, that, that really?
When you, when you reduce the amount of DNA collection that you're doing, most people don't commit a crime of murder without committing a lesser crime initially. And when you commit the lesser crime and you're able to collect the DNA from that crime, then it's stored for a later time where we're able to, to make the match based on a lesser crime that they committed. As it is now, we're no longer able to collect certain misdemeanors. So those that we used to be able to collect that DNA, they're no longer in CODIS, which is the, the collection agency. So we'll have a better representation of serial offenders in the, in the data bank.
That database. Yeah, that's the part that I found most interesting in here, the fact that the DNA was really tough to collect as a piece of evidence for future possible crimes or, or how to identify between a misdemeanor to a violent crime. It was not, and the existing laws is making it tougher. This will be hopefully much more clear to, to us, you know, to law enforcement and the judicial system. So I just wanted to get your point of view of that because you're in it every day as compared to, to myself, I'm not, so.
Right. I think it's very important and I think the cost is minimal as far as to the local law enforcement agencies and the amount that you're saving. A serial offender, a theft, person that does serial theft, they can get away with a misdemeanor after misdemeanor after misdemeanor right now. With the new law, after the third offense, then it gets classified as a serial theft and it becomes elevated to a felony. And each serial theft has a potential of committing another 200 crimes is basically one person that commits one crime, when you capture them, if it's a serial offender, they've committed 200 other crimes.
Correct.
And it's never a felony.
Interesting. Well, this helps with the, with the whole issue of our community. I think as a council, we have all agreed that quality of life is one of those things that we always work really hard in our community and supporting this initiative, those were just areas that I was not clear and I'm so glad you're here to clarify that today. But I just ask for the next future ones that we have a little bit more additional information if we're going to sponsor any type of potential, put our name on the ballot of that thick book that we all get and hopefully we read. Thanks, chief.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else care to comment? All right. To entertain a motion. a motion.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution in support of the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020, in the best interest of the city, to take our city back and make it safe again.
Second.
Here's to that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, well, it passes unanimously with the note from Councilmember Spandola, that in the future, if we can consider presenting the information against the resolution, we're asked to adopt. I believe that's what you asked. All right. Moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. A few exciting announcements and items to cover. Friday, October 18th, the downtown Center Street to Shasta Street and Rockhold Way between Center Street and Teagarden will be closed from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Pretty in Pink event. Saturday, October 19th, on Pluma Street between C Street and the Urgent Care driveway, will be closed from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the California Beer and Wine Festival. Tuesday, October 22nd, is the Boards and Commissions Dinner. This is the opportunity for the city council and staff to show their appreciation for the members of our six advisory committees, commissions, and boards for their hard work and dedication. We have a planning commission, an economic development commission, a parks and recreation commission, a senior advisory and youth advisory board, and a personnel board. Saturday, October 26th, our youth commission will be hosting a harvest festival from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Plazium in Yuba City. Monday, October 28th, will be our next economic development workshop for the economic development commission at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Commission will be continuing their work on the economic development strategic plan and bringing back to council for discussion and adoption in the future. October 29th, the Sister City delegation from Toride City, Japan, will be arriving for their annual week-long visit. Delegation consists of students, school, and city officials. The students get to stay with local families and learn about American culture. Sister City International Program was created by President Eisenhower in 1956, as a way to create bonds between different cities around the world. And I believe this is the 30-year anniversary, so it's a big deal. And we will be celebrating the 30th anniversary. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did they give you a time that they're supposed to be arriving by chance?
We are receiving them at 4:00 PM, I believe.
Out front, or?
Yes, right out front by the garden, the Japanese garden.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boomgarden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one meeting to report on, from the last time we met, was the Sutter Buttes Flood Cathol Authority. Got a pretty extensive report from the executive director. They're wrapping up a lot of their winter work. The projects continue to move along. There was one issue of note, which is the elderberry beetle. I know that you sat through that presentation. But there are some mitigation measures that eventually, I believe, will, could potentially transfer to the city of Yuba City, but not for quite some time. But anyway, Sabuca continues to move ahead, and I think the projects that they're doing are right on track. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilmember Spandola?
Thank you. This last couple weeks have been busy, but nice. Went to the Taste of Yuba Sutter. It was a wonderful event, a lot of good food, met a lot of people. One of the, even though it was a little windy, people were still in good spirits. So hats off to the chamber, Marnie, your team, and everyone. Did really well. The other, the By County Homeless Coalition, or committee, actually, the Yuba Sutter, they're meeting once a month, and we'll have more information about that particular committee. Michael and I have talked about him being involved in that committee to be more present. Brad has been part of that for the duration, and Vice Mayor Cardoza's been part of that committee as well. The Gilzeiser, the meeting got canceled for this month, and I would like to send my condolences to the family Flores. It's been a very trying week for the community and their family. I can only imagine what they're going through. And many of our community members, our chief and other staff, have been there to support during this very trying time. So I send my condolences and prayers and love to his family. So, and with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll pick up right there. Again, condolences and prayers out to the Flores family. The one thing I will say, I've been really impressed by the outpouring of our public and the community that's come together around this. The slice of respect was pretty phenomenal that went on, and there's been others. So, kudos to our community for stepping up and coming together in times of tragedy. Just one meeting to report on, we continued our PERS workshop. It's been going really good. We got two workshops left. I'm looking forward to the next one coming up, as I will be leading that discussion, because now it's time to try to figure out what we can do and what we are going to do. So if you can join us this next month, it'll be out on Facebook, I believe it's the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. That's approximated, it's a Thursday night, 6:00 PM, right here. And we will be taking everything that we've digested over the past four months, figuring out what our options are, and trying to formulate to come back at the December meeting to say, okay, here's our next steps, where we can go, or there's nothing that we can do. And I hope it's not the latter. I hope we come out of here with some ideas of what we can do. So please join us in just a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cardoza?
All righty. I've had a busy couple of weeks. Start off, we've, I could, attended the Homeless Consortium Meeting, and also the By County Homeless Services Group, the Feather River Air Quality District Meeting, good news on that. We are updating our data system and getting new computers, getting 2020. So when you come in, you'll be able to do all your permits and everything from all three categories. I attended the Health and Safety Neighborhood Coalition Smoke-Free Workshop. This was sponsored by Sutter County. We're all going to be working together to make outdoor dining and housing smoke-free. I found out in that, that 80% of the state is agreed upon having smoke-free dining. So that's, that's a great recommendation, or from the voters, or from the poll that they did, 80% of the state is for smoke-free dining. That's a great thing. I attended the Sutter Yuba County Museum Board Meeting. We have the Christmas, the next one's the Christmas, that'd be the December 3rd. And then also, I attended the Economic Development Corporation Yuba Sutter Business Consortium Business Walk last week, the mayor and I. We went and walked the streets, stopped several businesses, asked them three questions, how we can help them. We've had some good feedback, and we had a little bit of negativity, but it wasn't bad. We visited 70 locations, and we discussed it on 70 locations. We only had seven negative things against us, so 1% is pretty doggone good. We're pretty happy with that. Chamber events. I had a ribbon cutting at Sylvia's Pizzeria and Deli. He has a second location in South Yuba City at Hillcrest Plaza, so business as well, and he's had a second, second business. It's great for our community. Also, we attended the Taste of Yuba Sutter community events. Had a lot of fun with community events last couple of weeks. Attended Pasta for a Purpose. This is to help the Yuba Sutter Food Bank with Councilmember Shaw and mayor. I attended the St. Joseph's Church Fall Festival Dinner, and while I was there, I got talked into the St. Joseph's 70th Annual Harvest Festival. I got put in the dunk tank. The mayor of Marysville and myself had a little competition. He had the better ship, so he made more donations than me, but it was all good fun. The mayor was there. He didn't throw any balls at me, thank you. But I had a good time. It was fun. I attended the Downtown Business Association the first Thursday in downtown Pluma Street. It was Halloween this month, so I painted myself up as a scary whatever, scary clown. That didn't work out too good for little kids. I was doing crossguard duty on Teagarden and Plumas, crossed quite a few. We had over 1,000 people on the street, so there's quite a few people going up and down the street. The Kiwikey Foundation, I was doing traffic control for the Run for the Cure 5K, and I also attended the Bowling for Breasts, had a team in that. And then I also helped our Yuba City Police Department with traffic control for the Yuba City High School Homecoming Parade on Pluma Street Friday afternoon. They were, the high school did a quick parade, they did it last year also. So to save staff, I volunteered and helped out with them. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Right. Did you have one more thing?
I apologize. Another very serious concern that happened, that we attended the vigil for the deputy, the chief and several of us, and most of us weren't able to attend. So, as we do often, we divide and conquer when we're not all able to go together. And so, for the deputy, Dolly Wally, thank you, chief. So we attended the vigil, and that was, it was tough, it was difficult, but it was also encouraging to see all the individuals that, at Happy Park. Those that think Happy Park is not utilized, let me correct, it is quite, quite a bit utilized. And anyhow, so they were, the community was very thankful that we were there to support in one way or another with the deputy, the vigil for the deputy Dolly Wally. So thank you. I forgot to mention that. Thanks.
All right, thank you for doing that. As previously stated, we've been very busy with community events and speaking engagements and whatnot. I won't repeat that. But it has been quite busy. The, I have three meetings to report on. One would be the SECOG. I'm on the Policy Innovation Committee. It was primarily routine matters this month. We did have some policy discussions regarding streamlining processes and allowing the executive director to make more automatic authority for signing for contracts and whatnot. Will help streamline processes and make us more nimble and responsive and competitive with certain things. If you think about it, with that policy, or even with the main board meeting once a month, if something comes after, comes up the day after a meeting, you're automatically a month or two behind. So if we increase his signature authority, it'll make us more competitive and flexible. So that will be good. Sabuca, as Councilmember Boomgarden stated, it was a lot of things going on, a lot of the projects closing up. They're doing a lot of work up in the Oroville Wildlife Area. Also regarding the beetle project, there's so many things that folks might not realize that Sabuca involves themselves with, or has to get involved with. A lot of it is environmental and cultural. They really do spend a lot of time being responsible stewards of the property and lands. So, we spent some time on that, was a good meeting. And then, as Councilmember Shaw already stated, the PERS workshop, I think it was quite productive. We've had four in a row so far. And again, like you suggested, you know, we don't want to go out there with nothing to move forward, but I still think, hopefully, we will have something to suggest, obviously. But it was still important to give folks in the community an opportunity and a voice, and let them be heard, and let them be educated. Elaine, you're here, I really appreciate your participation, which was predictable, of course, but it's still really good. And it's really, bring 20 friends and tell them to do the same, because it's important that folks engage and be part of the conversation. So, thank you for that. All that being said, I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor and memory of Alec Flores, who, as we all know, was tragically killed, minding his own business, and really has, you know, for unfortunate reasons, but has still necessarily rallied our community together. And we're going to feel that impact for a long time. And thank you to everybody who's stepped up and joined forces and in support of the family and the community. So, with that being said, we close tonight's meeting in honor of Alec Flores.